...our city council meeting, August 6, 2018. Mr. Jack, could you lead us in a direction?
Dear order, and thank you for wonderful day we have today. Have us all in our decision making here for the city and the people in it. Be with all the families that are represented here, Lord. And be with all our first responders, our police, fire, medical, and be with our military, be with our leaders, and give everybody a safe trip home. Thank you. Amen.
I pray that the agents do the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand this one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Start off with approval for the minutes, council meeting July 2, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Now, we can go on. Approval of the minutes for the July 2, 2018 council meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes for July 2.
All in favor? Thank you. And now, can I get a motion to break into executive session?
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Say it.
All in favor? Can I get a little question for the executive session?
I might move a pause election for the government property before.
Yeah.
You have a part by reports. Mr. Sanders, you want to run on your report?
So, we had a pretty quiet month last month. We had six calls. One suspicious person, one suspicious activity, which were completely different things. One deaf call, two alarms, and a welfare check. Biggies were, we had the suspicious activity was on Church Street, 153. Caller said she thought someone was trying to remove the window unit for AC. So, we checked the area. Found a couple sleeping in van at 131 Church Street. They checked out okay. They didn't have anything to do with it. On the 26th of July, we were dispatched to 75 Spring Street to check on an elderly man on oxygen within the power without. Relative call worried about him due to the power being off, and he was okay. Early, when I say early hours on the 27th, that was just after midnight. Deputy car was patrolling the city. Saw two suspicious-looking folks right out here in front of City Hall. They were stopped in question. One just lived up the street and was just sent out. Couldn't find any reason to say otherwise. And on the 30th, we took a report of a stolen ATV from 1668 Pickens Street. It's being actively investigated. Warrants are pending right now. I think we've got a suspect identified. We continue to patrol the city as our call volume permits. And I've got new neighborhood watch signs to replace some of the old ones. I replaced the ones in Laurel Lake already, because I could do those. But some of the other ones that we've got in there, they got special little bolts and stuff. I don't know if it's supposed to be there. So, if you want some neighborhood watch signs, I've got a bunch of them in the car.
Thank you, sir. Would you be available at some point to come and go through some of the stuff in the police department that was left in there? Just to see, there's whole case files and stuff that we don't want to obviously put rid of stuff on the space, too.
Sure. Just let me know when.
There's some stuff in the safe, too.
Let me know when you want me to come.
Yeah, there were some coins that were in the safe.
Little challenge coins?
Yeah. We can't find any of them. So, didn't know.
Were they in there when you were there?
I don't remember. It's possible. I really don't remember.
Finished business, Cherokee Avenue update. So, I put an email in the binder from Barry Hallworth regarding the invoice, the remaining invoice, for you to review. And also, I went up with Barry to look at Cherokee Avenue. We were having some water. We had the torrential rains that were happening. We got a call from one of the neighbors, well, actually, the neighbor came up here and said that his yard was flooding. So, went up there, called Barry. Went up there and took a look at it. Problem is, the water's moving faster now than it was before due to the drainage stuff that we have in there. The water that's coming off of the other side of the road, the pipe and the opening is small, but there's a blockage, heard the scoping, that was done, I guess, a year ago. And he said it needed to be looked at, but you really don't want to open anything up there until you finish Kennesaw, because if you did, Kennesaw flooded. So, his recommendation is to do Kennesaw and then go back and finish Cherokee. Bring it on down.
Yeah, she has like a little pond down there. It runs really hard. It's pretty bad.
Has everybody been by and took a look at Cherokee Avenue? Are you good with paying the invoice now?
Yeah.
How much is it? We owe around $15,000, $200,000?
$15,717, $717,000.
That's just for the flyer or something?
No.
No, he has a balance of $71,000. I think we already paid him that. We got the email.
Still work for the boss over there.
$7,145,41.
That's what we owe.
He says his recommendation is to pay everything except for the 10% of the retainage, which is $4,227. And leave the balance of $7,000 to be paid upon satisfactory work. So, if you guys want, I can pay the $42,227 if you want to take a look and make sure that the work is satisfactory. I took a look. I didn't see a lot of difference in the aprons personally. When I went up there, it looked like they just added to the aprons.
Yeah, they done one sound out and added to.
Yeah. I think that's about the best you're going to get.
This is payment we owe. Next project, we just will have to have a whole lot strict specifications.
I agree. So, can I get a vote to...
On this right here, he says pay everything except, which would be $71,45. Is that what she's talking about?
Well, if you're not, that's if you're not happy with what's with the aprons. I mean, but...
With the retirement, you hope it is here, but no.
It says, his recommendation, not that they balance $71,45, but they pay upon satisfactory work.
Yeah. So, they've already done the work. Not mean we'd have to go up, take a look at it?
Yeah. I was trying to understand this email. Like, he's saying to pay $71,45.
Leaving the 10%?
Yeah, not pay the 10%.
Oh, I can be clarification.
Yeah, just be clarification.
I'll be clarification. I'll be back on that. Will we need a vote to pay that, or should we go ahead and...
Well, you vote on that pending check approval with the engineer. Or maybe say to go approve what the, somebody approves what the engineer recommends.
Make a motion to approve what the engineer recommends.
All in favor?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
He was supposed to come by here and look at, see if it made his approval. I told him he didn't have to look at.
You're talking about Barry? Yeah, we were here. Barry came with me and went out there with me. I just wanted to...
What did he say?
He said, he didn't like it. But they're not concrete people either. So, pretty much got what you get now. If you get somebody, when we finish out the bottom part of Cherokee Avenue, you get somebody that does concrete work, then you can have, you can go back and literally rip that out. They could rip it out as many times as you wanted to, but they're not concrete people. It's never more a problem. The vote to amend to the 2018 budget. I attached the email for you guys to re-read there and re-read the comments. And then you can take a look at the amendments. This has already been sent to Casey Jo just as a second sense of eyes for her approval that it was done correctly and make the recommendations that she might have.
Do you want to go over it, Mr. James, to...
I want to look at it, because I know you probably don't have it. I've gone over it, but I don't think everybody else has.
I think its goal was just to bring everything in line with what one of these have their actual spend, so.
Yes, that's the goal, yes. She recommended that we take a look at squash two. I want to see that squash two, the balances apply there. Your new business is that your expenditures did not exceed the revenues. And lastly, you have some, you had some area administration that were under budget. And many of the accounts, which were actually over budget and funds were transferred between accounts to plan to go. That's the part that I'm talking about here with Casey Jo to make sure that it was done accurately.
Yeah, but she said some of the accounts were all over the place and some were over budgeted in the first place. It's just that business, basically.
...for the conveyor tractor inside our one.
Okay, I got a question. We don't need to deduct. What we owe him for referring that side of the wall out back.
It was thirteen hundred and four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty hundred.
Yeah, just make sure you have an invoice from the amount that you deduct so you can have a record of that.
Okay. So maybe I should have to accept his bid and then subtract the amount that we have been paid on it?
I'll see.
Okay.
Discuss concrete slabs for the new picnic tables and we also may mention that the slabs that are currently there that the picnic benches are on are too short, so is that something we can do in-house?
It would be better if we hired somebody to do the picnic table slabs. But we gotta make sure there's no field lines under where they pour the concrete. There should be a drawing on the field lines. I don't know what. Matt, you were Cherokee County to get a copy of it. But it should be in the file before they've done the project down there. It'd be a matter of time.
Probably can. I thought too if we kept it pretty close like we did the benches, we should be close, you know.
I think it'll be off of them, but you know, everybody could get to bid out.
Bobby D. Bay.
Bobby D. Bay or get a couple people just to bid during the pass.
Do you have to advertise for that to have people if it's under a certain amount?
You've got a policy.
Small concrete works.
How much your amount is?
I'll take a look at it. I've got it and I do have that, so I'll look at the bids.
Maybe you write it.
But as long as it's under ten thousand.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
There's a big difference there. Yeah, there's a council policy on it, not state law, your policy, so check that.
How big is the pottery you're talking about?
Just I think the given tables, were they six foot? I think they were eight foot, weren't they?
No, benches were like eight, but the picnic tables, one of them is about eight or six because you've got the head.
Yeah. Well, is that what you're going to have when you're going to set underneath that to kind of make an answer, is it? I mean, it's not.
The amount of lace. Take the little man's own table.
Lace. So there's only two.
Or we put a table at each end and then. Or put a table in the middle of the two benches there. I'll give that information and find out what we have to do to get bits together for that one. New business, bid packet for demolition of twenty-four Spring Street. Tom was on Mary about that more the same way since we've already done the demolition of one building. This one would just be minus the asbestos part of it and he said if I would correct it and send it to him, he would review it, prove it and get ready. Is everybody okay with that? Any questions on that?
We're just gonna get a big clip taken down on the trees around the house table.
We are.
We gotta get concrete down for your house now. If you want to end up with a problem.
Well, Max's engineering, there's a thing there because it's on that stream. We gotta find out what, but he's supposed to be checking all that now to find out what footage you have to stay back on.
I think you tell us if you could cut them off in the ground if they.
He said he could get a permit too if they were damaged or if there was an issue and that. He's gonna come back and take a look at it and then let us know.
Well, see, we've got power country running through the trees.
Yes, that's true.
Well, the chart, the technology.
I'll get some more information from him.
All the details don't really disconnect it on that, do they?
Any other questions on that one? Discuss and vote on upcoming annual city audit. Met with Casey Joe last Thursday regarding the audit. The proposed date is November the fifth, two thousand and eighteen. There's no change in process and no change in cost. I believe it was, I thought it was fifteen four last year, fifteen thousand four and it may have just been solid fifteen. It wasn't in her paperwork that she sent me today. She didn't say that she would not be auditing the same thing she did last year. She doesn't audit two things.
Hang on, so Dr. expenses will not exceed fourteen nine.
There you go. Can I get a motion to approve?
To approve the expenses for.
Give a second. All good. Yes, thank you. Discuss and vote on engineering proposal for Max's engineering. This will be through December thirty-first. And that's already stated. He put down the professional rate. There's a whole packet here you can take it. I've read it, but he's agreed to charge us instead of charging us per project, he's agreed to charge us per hour. So which will save us some money along the way. And it will be on the projects that the council deems. Yeah, that you choose to do, yeah, which is gonna be your storm drain order for two thousand and eighteen. And he's also agreed to look at our capital improvement, overall capital improvement plan and make recommendations. And I'll bring that back to the council at our work session in September. For you guys to make choices there. Another thing that Barry says that going through some of the capital improvement projects that we have right now, a level one engineer could do it and report back to him and he could look over it. That would save money as well. He has thought of a lot of ways to, you know, yeah, to make sure that we can get the most bang for our buck and get our back once we're done. Any questions, David?
This hourly rate. How do you like? How do you know, is he gonna tell you what level he's gonna be charging at the day's revenue, whatever?
Yeah, he, that's, right now I'm here just looking at capital improvement. So of course if he gets involved and has to come out here and take a look at drainage or he gets involved and comes out and has to, you know, work with the EPA, it'll be his rate of course. But to save money working with a level one that's just gonna review the cost and material and stuff to compare some of our projects on capital improvement, that's what he plans on using the level one on. And his rates are comparable, I did check. How about you, any questions? James?
Good.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to approve the contract for Max's engineering.
Just a second.
Okay. Okay, next is to discuss and vote on the new water authority ordinances. So I spoke with, actually I met with Elise, Kelsey and I did. Just the whole level of mess. There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of it doesn't pertain to the city now because we don't have any natural streams. We don't have, you know, a lot of lakes and things like that in the city. So you're, do have some ordinances which will have to be adopted like for flood, flood stuff, you know. But a lot of it of this stuff, well, once we say we have a third party, which is Cherokee Water, they'll be responsible for handling that piece of it to make sure that they're adhering to the new ordinances and the, you know. So I had hoped to be able to vote on a couple of the ordinances tonight, but what she sent back, she sent me an email back and said that they don't have samples ready. She had one sample that was ready and it wasn't really ready because I sent it to everybody. The old one that was from two, ordinance was from two thousand and thirteen and the new one was from two thousand and nineteen. But she had just got it and had not had time to review that. So I called her today and spoke with her and she said she would work with me next week to get everything, get the ordinances together and we could vote on it one time September the second. Okay. For anybody that wants to take a look at that, including the audience, we have some books that, you know, that we're, I'm gonna put in some brochures that I've already ordered them today, so they should be in by the end of the week, first of next week. And you come in, you pick some up, I'll have one out front and it'll just explain what to do in case you have an issue with your water or what happens if you have an issue with flooding or stuff like that, so.
It's a really fun sauce freshening.
Yeah, big one, so stay tuned. Like I said, a lot of it doesn't pertain to us because we don't have the streams and lakes inside the city center. Before we go to public appearance, I wanna take time to just to shout out to our sanitation department. They've done a great job. I got a couple of nice comments back in our sanitation bills this month saying what a good job they've done over in Laurel Lake. One of our customers had trash that the birds had got into and sanitation department picked it up and, you know, didn't give them a fuss about it, just cleaned it up and that, so they said a big thank you back. I was able to talk with them a little bit and I look forward to, look forward to working with them a little closer. And I know our new referendum for Cherokee County has money set aside for sanitation and had truck repairs. I know a truck just went in for some repairs, so we're looking at that. Maybe a sanitation building in the future as well, so to house the truck that's currently sitting in their yard. Maintenance department, shout out to Mr. Queen here for working with Ricky Fawcett. We got our new line more delivered and it's been very busy. Beeped up by a lot of our tools in our maintenance department and have been working closely with Ricky. James, you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't have anything.
We have a few more tools to buy, but other than overall, I think it's going pretty good. Before I go to public appearance, just like to remind everybody to be mindful of our policy. We address the council. Turn it over to anybody, anybody can. Thanks, Senator.
I'm Bo Ingram, I'm here on behalf of my mom, Liz Ingram.
Yes.
I work for forty-six Cherokee Avenue where the water problem is at now. You've done such a good job on top of the hill and now it's flowing across my mom's property. Right, so I know you've probably got some plans long term, but something's needing to be done immediate because you know all this rain we just had this last week, you know, years over there, I think the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth and the erosion then, well, it's even worse now. So there's some silk fences, there's something that needs to be put up to prevent even more damage.
Yeah, Barry has already gotten with the solutions company that was out there. Supposed to be coming back and putting some of the silk fences back and adding some additional rock in there as a barrier.
Okay.
So like I said, if we fix the bottom right this very second, it's gonna flood Kennesaw. We're gonna move the beds along, hopefully within the next sixty days we'll have everything rolling there and then we can start the beds at the lower end of there. We know there's issues.
Well, that's the upside of it too, the stuff being eroded away, is the town gonna help bring some dirt in and grass, you know, reseed all this that's been washed away?
I haven't seen it this time. I saw it last time and I will come up, I've got pictures, I'm gonna keep a file and then.
The longer it goes, the more damage it's gonna be.
I understand, I understand. So I'll come up and get some more pictures and bring, get Barry back up and take a look at it as well and see if he can speed that a little bit.
Right, I would say just more damage will be. Of course, it's, you know, trash and all too, you can wash it over the problem.
I'm really sorry. And we will look at it.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll talk, we'll talk about reseeding and getting some dirt in there if needed.
Right.
I know they're gonna have to do something right now, like I said, with the rocks to push it away from that fence line.
Exactly, yeah.
So I appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I need to use this, I live this, live here.
Sure.
Keith Johnston, eighteen fifteen Pickens. I'm here, I'm just talking about some help, seek some help from the city. I'm mitigating some of the kudzu. Doing a meet, I'm a west coast guy, but it's sort of eating the town alive. And particularly my house up on Pickett Street here, there's a piece of property that's a valley here that goes, brings around, I guess it's city property and I think that's the origin of it and it's creeping up into probably twenty or thirty properties. I brought some pictures, I was requested to bring pictures.
Did you bring?
And I bought some new shoes today too. So there's a couple people that live, that are affected by it here as well. And I don't know whether the city could, you know, I spent about fifteen hundred dollars so far just trying to get my property line back. But in some cases, it's encroaching people's, right there, seems like their back door. And they probably don't have, maybe don't have the financial resources to mitigate it. And so if the city could maybe look at a plan or something, it's choking some of the trees, there's beautiful trees out there. So I don't know whether there's a beautification plan for the city or any kind of such thing.
James, is there a way to get, maybe get some brush guard or something like that, get it sprayed out back there or?
If you kill it, you don't create a watch.
The kudzu?
And also several other valleys over there that's grass and they also are gullies, but they're not kudzu, they have grass.
Yeah, it's just sort of a base of it. Yeah, you can't stop it.
Well, you know what that killer does. You know what our maintenance management going through the last six months? That's how you got there.
Can we?
Well, just cut it back to the property.
Can we take that, the tract, we have a tract, we're gonna cut it out?
Or we can follow through the property.
Yeah, there's an easy way of it because I know like where his house is, like even where our house is, back where our property line, there's like a ten and fifteen foot buffer between the back of our property line and the neighborhood behind us. The city owns like this fifteen foot expanse between all these properties and you can see it on the property map. I didn't know it till I was actually looking at our property lines. Well, the city owned it though.
Yeah, that's right.
So there's, you know, there's a way to access stuff without actually going onto someone else's property to, you know, where there's a liability issue.
Should have looked at and see if it'd be dangerous for Ricky to do it or if we keep going across property.
Yeah, let me make a note, just, I'll just check and see what our, what our options are.
Take that back.
Right.
But we could do something on our part if that was, because it's like we can kind of at least control the signs.
That does belong to the city behind your house?
Yeah, well, I found out only because whenever, I was trying to find out where our property line was behind our house. You can pull up, it's like the map through the assessor's office and the board. And there's like a fifteen foot expanse that just, and you can see it on the map. There's actually like this whole area that runs through, that just kind of trails all through the town that the city owns.
Well, let's take a look to see what we can do about it.
Yeah, and we just cut it to the property lines.
Yeah. Is that, is that what you're doing there, the bobcat and stuff?
Yeah, I'm cutting it back and then the top picture is actually the whole valley there.
It's all kudzu.
Yeah, and it's growing up the trees and, you know, it's gonna kill those trees.
Yeah.
Oh, Bill. Hi, somebody.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Bill and Beth Walters, one seventy-four Cherokee Avenue. First of all, good job on the drainage, you did the best you could, the concrete, a little bit of a disaster, but that's okay. We'll live with that. I always say beggars can't be choosy, right? We didn't have concrete acres before, so good job, we lived there. So we've seen, our first attempt was an utter failure, we saw the results of that. My, back of my house settled about four inches as a result of that, I do believe, but that's all right, it happened, it's over. The people across the street from us, if we can do a little community service for them, young couple, they rent right across the street from my house. Benny Thacker's mom's house, for those of you only who know Benny. Theirs never got taken care of because they were on the opposite side of the street. I took some of the dirt from where they dug up on our side and some of the gravel and sand and I tried to help them out as much as I can. Last range, if you just go up there, you could just help them out because they just had a new baby this week. So they don't have time to do anything with that. I would appreciate you looking into that for them as, as the ways to help them out.
Whatever.
And it's definitely on your, oh, I don't know what that would be, but right across from one seventy-four. Yeah, and, and it's definitely city, that's the city because it's like a foot. One foot that's cut a huge hole right there by the asphalt.
Yeah, that's what Barry was talking about, those, um.
Yeah.
Those rubber runners, speed bumps. He said if we did it and angled it and angled it towards that, the only reason that we haven't done that yet is because of the wash at the bottom of it, so it would be a fix later. But we, I think we got some rock and stuff, maybe we can get Ricky to go up there. I'll go with him to take a look at it.
Temporary fix, but I'm good.
Yeah.
On the topic of kudzu, when we moved in our house, we had kudzu coming up in fifteen feet of our back door. You know, we did our due diligence, cut it all down, we have a beautiful backyard, we're very proud of that backyard. However, this year, this is the worst it's been from what I just learned today is city property. Of the kudzu coming through my nice little privacy fence that I spent a lot of money on. So I do, if you're right, if we just cold cut it down, we're gonna have a drainage issue. I would recommend starting at the bottom and working stages. And if we're gonna seed it, seed it a long way, do one, start at the bottom and work up. Pick a, pick a certain amount of area, cut it, seed it. Six months later, cut, whatever, you guys know better than I do what to do with that. But if we're gonna plant, clear it, which would be nice property by the way, you do have that freshwater spring that runs behind my house. Could be another part of our natural area that people could use, we could potentially put a trail on there. So, you know, it's, it's got a lot of potential, it's sitting there, it's dead space, let's use it for something good. But if nothing else, like Keith said, I sure appreciate y'all getting it off my fence. And then finally, on the topic of, of crime. Those who know us know that we had a tough four years with the people who lived to my left. And I'm sure Cherokee and Pickens Police Departments knew them well. By the grace of God and good law enforcement, they are gone. However, I wanna help, I wanna be a part of making sure we get these signs up. Let's stay on top of crime. Right now, I think we're in a good space, we've got people moving in, renovating homes, this is a good time for Nelson. Let's keep it going, let's not sit on our laurels and get a bunch of meth addicts back in here messing up our town. So if I can do anything to help him, I own an automotive shop, I got enough tools to build a city hall. So if there's something, and I'd rather volunteer my help. All right, thank you.
I'll just send him that he can get us some of those something down here with him.
Come in the back, see if you can.
I'll get him some of them here then before the week's over and we'll get Ricky to put some, and put some up on Cherokee Avenue. Anybody else? Appreciate everybody that came out tonight. Thank you, it's nice to see you.
Good to see a friend.
Yeah, as good as a friend. That said, I've got a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second please.